Call the regular city commission meeting of May the 8th, 2018 to order. May we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any who's called to roll please.
Commissioner Kuziak?
Here.
Commissioner Perry?
Yeah.
Commissioner Scott?
Here.
Commissioner Wall?
Here.
Mayor Muntzger?
Here. We're all here. Okay, we get to start off with public discussion. We have an old friend from many years ago finally coming back.
Ted Segley, 68, Devonshire, Pleasant Ridge Environmental Committee. Good evening, Mayor, and Council, and staff. I have about four or five little statements. Our next meeting for the recycling committee will be forthcoming. For those people who want to know, give me an email, wprtv@yahoo.com, and we'll send the exact time and date. Ferndale is having a recycling event, kind of like the kind of event that we had over here at Gainesboro Park where people had TVs and paper shredding, things like that. It's going to be on this Saturday, the 19th, from 9:00 to 12:00, and no hazardous material. This is a little reminder, you probably know the second Saturday, remember the second Saturday of every month? Ridge resale shop will be open, they'll be taking things to... And for my visual aid, my last little point, my lovely assistant will...
Hey, you even come with an assistant.
Hey, Vienna.
Judy White. I'm supposed to hand it to him.
Thanks very much.
Nicely done.
Thank you. That was a good job.
I'll buy a vowel, please.
Now, you might say, "Why am I doing this?"
We're going to answer that afterwards.
Well, this part over here was on the curb, on Kensington Street, by the way, and I picked it up and I said, "I think I could do something with that." Unfortunately, I had to buy these things at the Dollar Tree, so it's a $3 investment, and when the wind is present, it spins around. Isn't that marvelous?
It is.
It is.
It's not just a lot of hot air, but it's wonderful. Now, you might think, "Well, that's cute, but look how much money I saved by not going to another store and buying something that's probably $30 or maybe $100." So, you might say, "Well, what's next?"
What's next?
Well, I was going to bring this other one in here, but it's a little large. It's about eight feet long and about four feet wide, something like that. So I took a video of it, if my phone works here. And I'm going to show it to you. Can you see it on the screen tonight?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let's see.
Maybe.
This is a first.
Technology at its best, here we go.
Do you see that all okay?
Yeah.
Oh, look at that.
Oh, nice.
I feel like we're building the science guy.
The large movement thing, I got that on Kensington Street again.
Cool.
The tail part, now let's see if I can move that a little bit. Am I going the wrong way?
There you go.
No joke.
The tail part and the pivot part, I got that up from Wellesley Street.
Another good one.
And it's very fascinating. It's so large, I'm not going to keep it in there, it's just too large. I don't want to attract too much attention to my backyard. Okay.
Probably casting shadows on your neighbors today.
Oh, that's cool.
So my next project is to somehow generate electricity, and so my next message is to Jason Kurciak, when you go to your meeting at the high school and middle school, I wonder if we could generate some sort of interest in wind catchers that perhaps catches attention but also makes electricity or a pump or something beneficial.
Yeah, and the next school board meeting we talked about is May 21st, it's a Monday, and at 7:00. And I would love it if you would join me with the wind catcher and we could give the same presentation and perhaps there could be some sort of tie-in to a science class or something like that. Maybe the board would see some usefulness in that.
Exactly.
So if you want to join me, you're more than welcome.
I'm delighted. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Cool.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ted. Good to have you back, Ted.
Thank you.
Any more stuff? All right, no more public discussion. We'll move on to the next issue with governmental reports, recognition of exemplary service by Officer Andrew Shelton, presented by interim police chief Vincent Pelazolo, Ferndale Police Department. We're going to have the chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager. It's my honor to have here today Chief Ferndale Vincent Pelazolo, and he brought along with him one of his lieutenants, David Spelman, today. They're here to recognize one of our officers, Officer Andrew Shelton, for some just plain and simple good police work. And it was the chief's idea to, this just happened recently, but it was his idea to come here to our meeting rather than have Officer Shelton go to one of their meetings, because he wanted you to know, as the new chief in Ferndale, what a job that one of our officers had done helping their officers out with one of the situation they had. So without further ado, I will give you Chief Vincent Pelazolo.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Appreciate that warm-up. You know, we've had a longstanding relationship with Pleasant Ridge Police Department. We've issued many awards, they've earned a lot of awards for our department, we have always had them come and speak in front of our council, so I saw this as a great opportunity for you folks to see what a great job one of your officers did, because he did a great job that day. So I'll give you a brief overview of what happened. April 23rd this year at 9:00 PM, Ferndale officers were dispatched to the area of Nine Mile Livernoy for an armed robbery of a citizen. Two suspects approached a citizen on foot in a parking lot, where one assaulted him with punches and the second one pistol-whipped him. The suspects were scared off by a concerned citizen who stopped to render aid. The suspects fled on foot in the neighborhood north of Nine Mile. The suspects managed to get away with the victim's cellphone. The witness that stopped gave the victim a ride to a nearby store and aided him by calling 911. Ferndale dispatcher received the call and dispatched cars within seconds, keeping them updated with developing information as they responded to the scene. Officer Maulmeister was the first car on scene, and she promptly gathered critical information from the victim and related it to other officers. Officer Schamansky, Bodendorfer, Lemke, and Skomsky set up a perimeter. Officer Shelton of the Pleasant Ridge Police Department responded to the area of Ridge Road in Cambridge based upon information broadcasted by the Ferndale police officer. Officer Shelton located one of the suspects who had removed some of his clothing to avoid being identified. Officer Shelton arrested the suspect and located a pistol used in the robbery. Pistol turned out to be an airsoft BB gun, and it was painted black to look real. For Officer Shelton's actions, he's being awarded the certificate of merit.
Thank you.
Good work. Good work. Thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Very nice.
Thanks so much.
Good job, Edgar. Congratulations. It's going to go downhill from there. No more governmental reports, so we move to city commission liaison reports. What, uh-oh, seeking him? What? Do you have a report? Sure.
Okay, I just wanted to give you an update on some recreation events and programs that we have been planning and that we are in the process of having for the summer. So we're extremely busy, we have all kinds of things going on right now for all ages, and first thing is the adult sand volleyball league. We are up to six teams. That league is closed now, and that's two teams up from last year, so that's pretty good because, you know, it's just our city, it's not like we're with somebody else, so having six teams just for us is pretty good. We have the camp and our swim team registration has already started, swim team started practice yesterday. Our numbers are already up from where they were last year at this time, so we expect to surpass or at least meet those numbers. Those both are great programs. So again, we're going to be doing adult swim meet during the summer. That was an awesome event last year. If you didn't make it, definitely try to make it this year. We had, I think, 20 or 30 participants, and we had at least 100 people watching, so it was definitely something to be seen, and everybody that participated had a great time. Baseball is going to be starting up here soon. We have five teams. We actually have more teams than Ferndale does in a couple of the leagues, so that's, you know, something to say about our residents, they come out and register, and baseball is still popular. They started renovating the field today, so they actually, it should be done, we're hoping, you know, weather permitting, they'll be done by Friday, so they scraped it, they started digging up, at least, I think they were going a foot down of the field, and they're bringing in new athletic mix, and going to do that. So this year, for the first time in many years, the junior garden club was super successful, they met six times. We averaged anywhere from 20 to 30 kids each meeting. That's a great program with the help of the garden club, we've kind of partnered with them, been able to get that off the ground, so.
Scott, can I just comment on that, too?
Yeah, absolutely.
Like, for anybody who's considering it, it's such a great, like, my daughter's been in it, and the kids love it so much, and they go out of their way so much to make it really special for the kids, it's just really a great program.
Yeah, they do enjoy it, and it's, you know, they will do a craft, they have snacks, and it's after-school, so check, come into the community center, and you can check, we have those dates, and we always send it out on eBlast, the monthly eBlast that we send out. Our 50-plus trips are super successful, most of them are full. We have a number of them coming up for the summer, so make sure you check your ridger for that. The pool will be opening here two weeks from Friday. We had a pretty big repair that we had to make, actually had to break up part of the deck and repair the return line going to the pool, the water that comes from the filter back into the pool was severely damaged, so not sure how it happened, it just, one of those things, there was a 14-year-old pipe, I think the flanges on the screws busted and it just broke, so we're lucky we were able to find that because...
You were able to get it?
Yeah, it wasn't, we didn't have like a complete wash away, because that's a six-inch pipe, pumping 800 gallons a minute through it, that water would go fast, and we would eventually find it because we noticed that we're losing that much water in the pool, but it was pretty minimal. Also, at the pool this season, the deck chairs were all re-strapped, they were just delivered last week, so those are like brand-new deck chairs for everybody, umbrella covers, those just came in yesterday, so new umbrellas, they are a Pacific blue color, we changed it up, tried to get a little bit of color, but darker, so they do have a flaw, and that's a little bit harder to see, so they look great. And that's really about it. Citywide garage sale is this weekend, make sure you come into the community center or city hall and get your sign, and...
Is tomorrow the last day to register?
No, you can, if you want to get on the map, it's Thursday, Thursday at 5:00. You have to register by then to get on the map. If you register after that, we can't guarantee that you get on the map, but I think we have a pretty decent amount of people right now, and we always get between 80 and 100 houses, so make sure you come in for that.
Cool.
Any questions?
Absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Good thing.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Okay, unless somebody else shows up, we'll move on to city commission liaison reports. Commissioner Wall, Recreation Commission.
So we are going to get ready to do the master plan again, which we haven't done for five years, so this is going to be a great opportunity for the whole city to weigh in, what they'd really like to see. This is how Gainesboro Park got started, and look how wonderfully that turned out, and it was, you know, a great community effort, everybody weighing in, children, adults. So keep your eyes open, and please take the time to fill it out, it's very important for getting things done. Cool? Yeah, it's exciting.
Thank you. Commissioner Kuziak, Ferndale Public Schools.
Thank you, Mayor. Just some updates on what's going on in the district right now. Big news, there's a Big Green Detroit Learning Gardening Initiative, and they have partnered with Ferndale Schools, this is very exciting. Ferndale Lower Elementary, Ferndale Upper Elementary, and University High School were awarded learning gardens from the Big Green Detroit Learning Initiative. The gardens each cost $50,000, and they will provide the students with an amazing opportunity to dig into the learning.
Your pun intended.
This is a learning initiative, it creates these dynamic outdoor learning classrooms, and they will produce edible gardens for the participating students. Each garden will be customized to the location for age-appropriateness and shade and all the unique contours of that location. It's a program that the Urban Schoolyards are throughout the country, and they really are a project where kids can learn about the outdoors, learn about science, learn about community, all in one spot, and it's a really good program that Ferndale Schools is participating in. Like I said, three locations, it's really a fantastic award and opportunity for the district. Another good news for the district, the Ferndale School Board, at their meeting authorized $100,000 in funds for additional technology in the classroom. These approved funds were set aside from the bond campaign in 2012. An allocation of these bonds were approved by a technological advisory committee. This was an application process where the teachers would submit different needs and identify good fits for technology in their classrooms, and the board released $100,000 in these funds to be spread district-wide, so that's another good infusion of money across the district that is really going to benefit the community's children. And finally, Mayor, I'd just like to share some good news, that Ferndale High School this year will have 10 seniors who will be entering the University of Michigan this fall. That's a really nice achievement, but it gets even better. Of these 10 seniors, eight received the Gene Fairfax Scholarship. The Gene Fairfax Scholarship is awarded to new incoming U of M students who come from economically diverse school districts, and is the equivalent of four full years of tuition.
Wow.
So it's an incredible achievement, and on top of the eight students who were awarded that scholarship, the two other students also received full scholarships. So the 10 students graduating from Ferndale High School who will be entering the University of Michigan in the fall, none of them will be paying a dime in tuition.
Wow.
So that's an incredible achievement. Good news coming out of Ferndale Schools, and just a reminder, we talked about it with Ted, but Monday, May 21st at 7:00, will be the next school board meeting. So that's all I have, Mayor.
Thanks, that was good. All right, Commissioner Perry, Planning, DDA.
Thank you, Mayor. The Planning Commission and DDA met on April 23rd. The DDA discussed and approved their 2018-19 budget. The key items on the budget this year include, like, they budgeted for the design and engineering work for the Woodward Streetscape project. They also budgeted for the community promotions to cover our contributions to the Fab Cab, which has come back, which is exciting, as well as our banner maintenance out along Woodward Avenue. Funds are also, funds were also put into the budget for the development grant for the facade improvements for the businesses along our DDA. And then also, funds for the capital outlay. One of the programs is a planter program that the DDA also decided how to implement that program, also to help the different businesses have planters, they sort of figured out the whole system of planters and what plants should go in, and, you know, sort of that whole larger discussion, to help unify the DDA. And then they also started working on, they put the budget in place to also start planning for the capital outlay for the Woodward Streetscape construction. They did all this and still added and maintained a good solid budget, adding to the fund balance in a good healthy way. So the next DDA meeting will be on Monday, July 23rd. Thanks.
Good. Nicely done. All right, Commissioner Scott, Historical Commission.
Yes, we're weeks away from our annual home and garden tour. You'll be seeing some information floating around the city, and in fact, you can go to our city website to buy your tickets in advance, there's a link to click in order to get tickets in advance, a small fee to do it online, but it's worth it to have it done early. Lots of lovely homes on the tour, and I have to say, it really came together very nicely this year, as it always does. So the date is June 2nd, Saturday, June 2nd, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. Look for information around town, and by all means, if you would like tickets, go online, come to the city hall, call me wherever, and we'll have a good evening. It'll be a great day. Thanks very much.
Any comment, questions, for any? All right, thank you. Let's move on to the next item, it's consent agenda. I ask for your indulgence, I wanted just to mention some of the items in the consent agenda and also read one specifically. I just wanted, I did, for people just that aren't looking at this agenda, to know that we have a resolution recognizing May as Mental Health Awareness Month, a resolution recognizing Saturday, May the 12th, 2018, as National Association of Letter Carriers Food Drive Day. I know they're going to be up there singing at the Royal Oak Market and playing, and a lot of activities are going to be up there on Saturdays, so I think you're going to have mail carrier, letter carriers who play instruments and sing, so, cool, should be interesting. Proclamation declaring Tuesday, May 15th, as Police Memorial Day, and May 13th through 19th, 2018, as Police Week. Resolution recognizing Tuesday, May the 22nd, 2018, as Volunteers' Recognition Day in the city of Pleasant Ridge. And the last one is what I wanted to take a moment with. One of our residents, Jennifer Peruk, brought this to my attention, and I thank her very much for doing that. She also had a letter signed by a number of other residents who were supporting the proclamation declaring the first Friday in June as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And I just wanted to take a moment to read it because I feel it's important enough, it certainly is important enough to me, and I know to others who are sitting up here, and I'm sure to most of our residents. Whereas every day 96 Americans are killed by gun violence, and on average, there are nearly 13,000 gun homicides every year, and whereas Americans are 25 times more likely to be killed with guns than people in other developed countries, and whereas protecting public safety in the communities they serve is mayor's highest responsibility, and whereas support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with helping with keeping guns away from dangerous people, and whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, I wouldn't say that I am, but are in our best position to understand how to keep their citizens safe, and whereas in January 2013, Hadiya Pendleton, a teenager who marched in President Obama's second inaugural parade and was tragically shot and killed just weeks later, should be now celebrating her 21st birthday, and whereas to help honor Hadiya and the 96 Americans whose lives are cut short, and the countless survivors who are injured by shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations has designated June 1st, 2018, the first Friday in June, as the Fourth National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of Hadiya's friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods, and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 1st, the first Friday in June in 2018, to help raise awareness about gun violence, and whereas by wearing orange on June 1st, 2018, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors, and whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore being resolved that I, Kurt Muntzger, Mayor of the city of Pleasant Ridge, declares the first Friday in June, June 1st, 2018, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day, and encourage all citizens to support their local communities' efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. So thank you again to Jennifer, and I think it's very important that we recognize June the 1st as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. So with that, I will ask if there's a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Your Honor, I move that the consent agenda be approved.
Is that our second?
My second.
Any discussion? Okay, may we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuziak?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, thank you. The next item is establishing public hearings on the, to solicit public comments on the fiscal year millage rates and the fiscal year combined city budgets. Jim, I think you'll look this.
Yes, thank you. In your packet is the draft budget, which will be setting a public hearing for the June meeting. Also included in that is the resolution certifying our millage rates. Public hearings will be held for those in June, at which time you can adopt them. I'll go through and do a brief introduction of the high points of our 2018-19 Pleasant Ridge city budget. We'll talk about the millage rates, some trends, where we are with pension funding, in light of the recently passed police pension millage. We are doing three-year budgeting now, we've been doing this for a few years now, and it really helps planning purposes, looking ahead for what we have coming up, future years. And then we'll talk about a brief overview of the budget, revenues, and expenditures, and then also utility, well, water rates and utility rates. So tonight, we set the public hearing for June. The budget is available in this packet, we'll be putting it up independently, it's a standalone document on the website for review this week. Actually, we'll be taking on the budget, actually, we've got a motion before you for taking action on utility rates tonight, we don't need a public hearing for that. And this will all become effective July 1, 2018. So the headline number for residents is our 2017 total combined city millage rate was 21.5677 mils, and the 2018 millage rate is proposed at 21.4388 mils. So the millage rate is actually going down, even with the police pension millage starting to phase in, so our residents will see some growth in their tax bill lower than inflation because of that. Our millage rollback factor this year was .9763, that means you take everything, our millage from last year, multiply it by 97.63%, and that's our new millage rate. We had property tax revenue growth of 2.1% because the state's inflation factor is 2.1% this year. Assessed value in the city grew by 2% last year, which is lower than previous years, which were quite high, 6% to 10% for probably four or five years in a row. Last year, assessed values grew 2%. The city's taxable, total taxable value grew by 5%, and that's because of the impact of houses selling, and then those houses becoming the taxable value, uncapping and popping up to meet the assessed value. So you see, these are all of the various components of our total city millage, of millage rate of 21.4388, and the police pension millage is new, kicking in this year. This is the graph that shows the trend for millage rate over time. It was quite stable for a long time. We used to have rollbacks back in the 90s, a little bit in the early 2000s. 2014, we passed a number of millages to put the city on stable financial 2014, we passed a number of millages to put the city on stable financial grounds and then they've been being rolled back since. When you get your total mill, your total property tax bill, the, the city tax rate is 21.43 mils, but Pleasant Ridge is, only accounts for 46 percent of your total tax bill. 31 percent of your tax bill goes to Ferndale Schools, 7 percent goes to Oakland County Intermediate School District, the county collects 9 percent of your total tax bill and then you have some various other, Community College, Smart, and then other is County Parks and Recreation, the Zoo, the Art Institute, Metro Parks, small taxing authorities like that. Over time, this is our inflation-adjusted revenue, so these, these are revenues in 2018 dollars going back to 1985 to just show how the city's total revenue picture changes over time and then kind of ebbs and flows. And the black line is our current 2018 level, so you can see for a long time from the, really in the 90s up until the end of the 2000s, we, our total city revenues were actually higher than they are today. And you see the impacts of the recession and you also see the impact of this right here, this orange line, which is state shared revenue. And it just gets smaller and smaller and smaller and smaller. We've had to tax ourselves at a higher rate to make up largely for what the state's taken away from us is the, the bottom line there. So, even though we've had, we've passed a number of millages in recent years, all we've done is restore ourselves to the long-term revenue level that we've had. And again, this is percentage of general fund revenue by source. You see the property taxes in the 90s were down around 58, 60, 62 percent of all city revenue, now they're around 76 percent of all city revenue. So again, what we've had to do to make up for losses and revenue sharing. Putting that one more way, the orange line, just because it's really important. The orange line is inflation-adjusted state share revenue in 2018 dollars and the blue line is the actual amount the, the state sent us in that year. So you'll see, this year we're at around $250,000. In 1985, the state sent us $280,000 in 1985 dollars. And if you were buying a car or a house in 1985, it went a lot, your money went a lot farther than it does today. So, inflation adjusted, you're getting $600,000 a year from the state and equivalent 2018 dollars back in 85 and now we're getting 250,000. So, for city like Pleasant Ridge, $350,000 is a lot of money. So that's what we're contending with. On the brighter side, assessed property values have rebounded from the Great Recession and we're now above the, where we were for total assessed property value in the city and taxable property value has also continued, but these trend lines, taxable property value would have been, you know, up here instead of down here if it wasn't for that reset during the recession. Highlights of the budget, in the general fund, we're projecting $18,500 of net revenue in 2018-19. This is a little lower than we would like it to be, but we are, we are playing catch-up on our pension, our increasing pension contribution requirements from the state, the police pension millage, which is phasing in over four years, will help with this. Ideally with the size of our budget, we should be targeting $30,000 of net revenue a year minimum, so, we'll get there. We're not where we want to be quite yet, but we're on a good path. The pension millage this year, phasing in at 0.35 mils, that will raise $52,500 of revenue and we have $185,000 of eligible police pension expenses. Major expenditures this year, what's the big project this year? We've had Gainesboro Park and we've had patio project over the community center, we've had some big projects. Well, this year we're continuing, we've got a couple exciting ones, well, one exciting one for the community, one exciting one for the police. We've got the community center big room project on town, which will kick off in September after summer camp with the kids ends and everyone goes back to school and things quiet down at the community center, we're going to be overhauling the big room. And it's, it's pretty exciting, it's going to be great. It's really going to complement the patio, the outdoor space very nicely. The other major expenditure this year is we're looking at purchasing a police SUV. It's time to reinvest in our police fleet. Police wear out their vehicles rather quickly because they are used, you know, all day, every day. And things happen when you're driving around town all day, every day, to police cars or other cars. So that's the overview of the, the city budget. Are there any questions on that high-level overview before I move on? Okay. Utility rates. These are adopted by resolution, which is included in your packet. The draft proposed rates, subject to approval, are $32.60 per bill, a combined water and sewer usage rate of $73.53 per MCF used, a garbage pickup fee of $21.79 per bill, and then the ERU, stormwater fee of $46.22 per ERU per bill. We have some capital improvement projects in the water and sewer fund, enterprise fund budget. We use the three-year budgeting to plug into a rate model, which sets rates for this year based on our anticipated needs this year and in future years. And then sets the water rate to make sure that we end up with sufficient revenue to cover our projects in this budget year and the upcoming budget years. Our major projects include continuing the cleaning and televising of sewers, we have three years remaining on that project. What we're doing is we're going back in all of the streets that were reconstructed prior to 2010, we're going back and re-televising and cleaning those sewers, just to make sure that they remain in good shape. As we've gone through and rebuilt streets, we've cleaned and televised the sewers and made any necessary repairs at that time, so, it's getting on 15, 20 years since the first streets were done under that project, it's time for this. And then after this, we'll be on a 10-year clean and inspection cycle for all our sewers. We're beginning a project to inspect our water mains and replace as necessary, some of our water mains are approaching 100 years old. We're very fortunate to have very nice sandy soil here, so we do not experience water main breaks like many communities that are in clay soils, because clay soils don't move, don't move, don't move, and when they move, they, they shear and it tends to break water mains. Sand, things just kind of, you know, flow along real nice and you don't have those quick movements to break your water mains, so we're lucky. We also are coming up on time to replace the water meter head and that's the thing that's on top of the water meter in your basement. It measures the, how many times your meter is spinning and then that's how we read your water meter. Those have a battery in it, which has a certain life expectancy. We're approaching the end of the life expectancy of that battery and we're also approaching, we're actually beyond end-of-life cycle for the specific equipment for those water meter heads, so we have to replace all of them. And that's probably $150,000 expense to go through the entire city and replace those. It will be good because our new water meter heads that we'll be putting in are cellular, which means that any resident will be able to, you'll be able to download an app on your phone and you can check your water, water usage in real time. So if you're on vacation, you know, you'll get immediate notification if you're monitoring it to see if you have a leak or if you have a running toilet, so hopefully we won't have those instances where a resident gets a $3,000 or $4,000 water bill because they've had a running toilet and you didn't know about it for months. So all of those are incorporated into the water. Inputs into this year's utility rate, this is what we are paying to our suppliers, the water wholesale cost is going up 3.1 percent, sewage treatment's going up 1 percent, stormwater treatment cost is going up 2 percent, and our garbage pickup cost is going up 3.5 percent. That's driven largely by a gasoline price index. There's a portion of the garbage pickup rate which is tied to the cost of gas and that's gone up quite a bit in the last year. So, what our consumer rate increase for our average water user of 8.4 thousand cubic feet a year of water would be a 2 percent increase in your bottom-line utility bill, incorporating water, sewer, stormwater, ready-to-serve and garbage. So, that's right with inflation. Have you answered any questions you have on either the proposed budget or the 2018-19 proposed utility rates?
Are there any questions for Jim? No? No questions? Okay, we're going to do this in two parts. First, first we want to establish a public hearing on Tuesday, June 12th, 2018, at 7:30 to solicit public comments on the following, the proposed fiscal year 2018-19 millage rates and the proposed fiscal year 2018-19 combined city budgets. Do I have a motion to approve establishing public hearings?
So moved.
Did you read it for me?
I can't, you just did. Your Honor, I move the public hearing be established for Tuesday, June 12th, 2018, at 7:30 PM to solicit public comments on the proposed fiscal year 2018-2019 millage rates and the proposed fiscal year 2018-2019 combined city budgets.
I just wanted to hear.
Thanks.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Any discussion? May we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuzia?
Yes.
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. Second item is, can I have approval of a resolution regarding the 2018-19 utility bill rates?
Your Honor, I move that the resolution regarding the 2018-2019 utility bill rates be adapted as recommended.
Is there support?
Support. Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, Amy?
Commissioner Wall?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuzia?
Yes.
Commissioner Perry?
Yes.
Mayor Metzger?
Yes, motion carries. All right. We move to the city manager's report.
Thank you. The only thing I have on the city manager's report is I want to give you an update on the upcoming Indiana, Bermuda and Ridge Road reconstructions. This information will be on the city's website soon. This is an almost finished draft of the information piece we're preparing. We'll also be sending a postcard mailer to every house in town. In the past, we've had a meeting that was targeted to the residents of that street because a street construction project typically didn't impact someone who lived on a different street and it did have large, specific impacts on the street that was being reconstructed. This is a little different because Indiana, Bermuda, nobody, nobody lives on those streets, they're all side streets, but they're major distributor streets within town. And Ridge Road, we do have, I think 11 houses that have only, only have access to Ridge Road, the 30 or so that front on Ridge Road, the other 20 or so houses do have side street access to one of the other streets. So, in this case, we do have a few residents who will lose some access to their property, but the bigger impact is going to be on the community at large. So we're sending a postcard mailer to all, all houses in town to just let everyone know what the schedule is and what to expect with the construction project. So, I'll talk you through this because there's no way you can read it at this scale. When it's on your computer screen in front of you, it will be legit. But, phase one is concrete work. So, this will have limited impacts to the Sylvan and Indiana intersection and then to the portion of Millington Road just east of Ridge Road, which is basically crumbling before our eyes. Those will be torn out and rebuilt in concrete. During this phase, they'll also be doing some work as needed on the curbs along Ridge and Indiana and Bermuda. The curb work won't close the street down, you'll still have access to get through there, but you will see some work going on. The curbs generally are in very good shape and we are saving them in most cases to reduce costs for the project. So, impact here is with Millington being closed at Ridge, will you, it'll be local traffic only at Woodward and Millington and with the Sylvan intersection being closed, we will have it posted here, no turns from Woodward, local traffic only. If you do need to get from the west side to the east side or vice versa, I think we all know the other alternate routes you can take, you can get down to Woodward Heights and do the crossover there, or you can go up and do the crossover south of 696 and then get over to the west side and then of course, you can use the crossover south of Oxford to go get to the east side. So it will be a bit of inconvenience not being able to cross at Sylvan, but we shall persevere, I'm sure. The schedule for this is beginning, phase one begins May 14th, which is next Monday, and it's expected to continue through May 29th, so the end of May. Phase two will be resurfacing Indiana and Bermuda. Once the phase one concrete work is done, all of the intersections will be concrete, so no work is going to be done through the intersections. If you do live on the east side of town, you'll be able to get to your house from Woodward, but Indiana will be closed in between all of these streets, same with Bermuda. So again, the same detour process will be in effect. If you're on Sylvan, Fairwood or Woodward Heights, you will have access to Gainesboro to get to points beyond. If you live north of Sylvan up here, you'll have to get creative if you want to go east or, or south, but again, some short-term pain. This phase will continue from May 29th through about mid-June. The nice thing is it should only be a couple of weeks that this will be in effect, two to three, depending on weather. And then, once school lets out, we can start on Ridge. The Ridge, Ridge portion of the work is being driven by the school schedule, we can't close Ridge Road down because it's the access into Roosevelt or Ferndale Lower. So in this case, this is going to be quite disruptive because Ridge is going to be completely closed, there's not going to be access across Ridge anywhere. So if you live on the west side of Ridge, you're going to have to go use Maplefield and then down to Drayton and then over Pine Crest and then, you know, to, to get beyond to where you're going. You will be able to get into the community center lot from Woodside Park and you will also be able to get into the community center lot most of the time from Millington if you're coming from the east side, so we wanted to maintain access there. We do, we advise you do not use this as a cut-through, the community center parking lot, we will be patrolling it because we don't want this to become a cut-through that would be dangerous and undesirable. So don't do that. But all of these streets will be posted, local traffic only, do not enter, because all of these will end at Ridge. So, everyone who lives on Oakland Park and Oxford, I hope you enjoy your time off from having traffic coming down the streets, we know you get a lot of it, but this will be likely the largest disruption. And unfortunately, with Ridge being long and a, a long stretch, this part of the project is scheduled to progress from June 18th through mid-August. I don't know exactly when Ridge will be completely shut down, when you won't be able to use it anymore, but that's the timeframe, those two months where you should expect disruptions. For the residents who do live and only have access on the Ridge, who are in a mid-block location, you'll be able to, they'll be able to put their trash out as normal, the trash truck will, will be allowed up and down Ridge when possible. If that's not possible, the construction, the construction crews will make sure that the cans get moved to where they can be picked up. But, in every road project, some people lose access to their property and then have to park and walk. In this case, it's about 11 houses on Ridge that are going to have to do that. But, it'll be about a two-month process and will be done by the time school opens again in fall, so, once we get through this, all of our streets will have been rebuilt and will be looking good.
Jim, a couple of the questions I got today were about like school bus pickup. I know some people were concerned, they, they, their kids are picked up, they're on the east side and they're picked up on Indiana, like, I don't know where all the stops are. I know there's one at Devonshire.
I, you know, I don't know the answer to that because the school district sets their own routes and their pickup locations, so they'll have to adjust those. We've been in contact with the school transportation department, we've given them the heads-up that, you know, this project is coming and that, you know, they need to be ready to move those bus stops. But, really with the, most of the streets being open, the Sylvan intersection may disrupt their circulation routes a bit, but, you know, Indiana will be open until the beginning of June, so, that really is only two weeks of school and I would just advise parents to, you know, the school will communicate with you on where those, where those bus stops are being moved.
Great. The bus driver, I think, started talking to him about it today, I'm trying.
Right, yeah.
And then will anything change with the traffic in the alley on the east side as far as?
We're not advising, we didn't, that's why we didn't post the alley as a detour route because the alleys are not wide enough to handle two-way traffic and if people start to try to use the alleys as a relief, you know, circulator route, I know people are going to do that, but...
Well, Woodward's right there.
Right, exactly, Woodward's right there, it's, you know, it's going to be a mess, good luck if you use the alleys because they're not wide and, you know, it will be kind of painful if you do that, but...
And there are sections that are one-way.
There are, yeah, and there are sections that are, most of them, most of the sections, you can't get two cars passing each other, so, we have some standoffs.
Is that all? Any question, any other questions for Jim?
Just a curiosity, would it make sense to post a no right turn, 4 to 7 PM sign on Elm Park while Millington is down?
On Elm Park?
Poplar, sorry.
Well...
I'm not sure that it makes sense.
No, because... No, because we, the reason is, the reason traffic is moved from Millington to Poplar is because it's the boulevard.
Yeah.
And the theory is that it can handle that traffic more easily than Millington.
Yes.
So I think it just continues to.
Okay.
Yeah. All right.
And then you said a postcard's going out to every home to...
Yes, we're working on that. When...
Yeah, it's going to be sent, we're going to send it to the printer tomorrow, so it's a quick turnaround, so people will probably see it in their mailbox at the beginning, beginning, middle of next week, depending on how busy the mail is, they'll get it out. So just going to say, hey, this is coming, go to the website and...
And then is this a unique website, or is this something that'll be on the city website?
And on the city website, we're going to put a, a big link on the front page to it, and you'll have all the information on there.
Great. Also on the, oh, I'm sorry. Also on the postcard is going to be a notification for the Parks and Recreation Master Plan Survey. We'll do that as well.
So we all have neighbors who are maybe not online, so we can all make sure to sort of try and help, if we can all sort of help communicate with them about some of the things that are posted online, too.
Whenever we, whenever we have these, we all, we usually have paper copies, especially like this piece that Jim was working on, we'll have, we'll have a hard copy of that. And any of the, any of the supplemental pieces that we have, we'll keep hard copies at the community center or, or here for people who they'll come and pick up. But basically, it's, once you get that first initial amount of information, not much is going to change. It's pretty, it's, it's a pretty straightforward project, it's, you know, because it's just an asphalt to be covered.
Well, it's good that we're signing postcards to every single person.
Yeah, that way they know it's coming, so.
No more questions? All right, then let's move to other business. Sir?
Thank you, Mayor. Real quick, this is the May book. It's called Grown Up Anger, and it's an incredible book. It's, if you allow me, let me read this real quick. Woody Guthrie was angered by the violence and exploitation that belaguered his fellow man and dedicated much of his life to honoring them and song. Bob Dylan, in turn, was enormously influenced by Guthrie's advocacy and songwriting and made the elder a guide for his own attempts to transform American music. These two artists are the focus of Daniel Wolfe's outstanding examination of America in the 20th century. Grown Up Anger, The Connected Mysteries of Bob Dylan, Woody Guthrie, and the Calumet Massacre of 1913. This book has been widely praised as the best book on both of these iconic figures, but it has also won acclaim for its unflinching account of the historical struggle between the haves and the have-nots, which fueled so much passion in both of these men. Weaving all this together results in an incredible, incredible book, and its themes are guaranteed to spur some contemplative discussion. And this will be the topic of our book club tomorrow night at 7 o'clock at the Pleasant Ridge Community Center, Daniel Wolfe's Grown Up Anger. So if you can join us tomorrow, that would be lovely. But if you see this book and you're interested in either of these artists, if you're interested in American music, if you're interested in the 20th century, I mean, this book really covers a broad swath. Is that a word? Swath?
Swath.
You're cold.
It's okay. Just that A, it's that A.
Tomato, tomato.
Yeah, exactly. So great book, highly recommended. But this book brings to close our season. We don't have any books for June following. So we were asking if residents in the community had any titles that they would like to see the Pleasant Ridge readers take up in the upcoming year ahead of us. So if you could email me, or there's a Pleasant Ridge Readers Facebook page, we're taking suggestions for our 2018-2019 reading schedule. So if you'd like to suggest a title for that, please do so. And finally, real quick, I just want to mention Commissioner Perry, and I had some discussions with our city manager, Jim Rockman, last week. Some of you may know there was an item brought up on Facebook about the condition of the service drive.
Sidewalks.
Sidewalks. The, they had become pretty treacherous. There was a lot of debris, some broken bottles. And one of our residents, Jacob Andry, had spurred some effort to get residents out there to help clean it up a little bit. So there was a Facebook drive, Cheryl Ramos was involved in that, Eric John and Eric Dickerson. And then Ann Perry and myself showed up on Sunday around 11 o'clock on the service drive and swept 3,340 pounds of debris off of that sidewalk.
Are you kidding?
It was incredible. It turned, that's 1.67 tons of debris, so gravel, dirt, weeds, some broken alcoholic beverage bottles. All that was swept up, and, well, it was rewarding because as we were out there doing it, there was a few pedestrians, joggers, who used that route, and they were very, very appreciative.
Nice job.
And I know Jim has spoken to Oakland County about whose responsibility that is. I think we're all in agreement that we shouldn't have residents out there on a regular basis taking care of that stretch of road. It seems to be in kind of a no-man's land there, unfortunately, and it showed because it had been, it had probably been years since that was, the sidewalk was attended to anyways. So I just wanted to acknowledge the effort, especially Jacob and Cheryl and Eric, and Eric to come out and Commissioner Perry to, to take care of that. But I was wondering if, if there was any kind of progress in, or any kind of commitment from the county or to really going forward, take care of that little stretch?
No. No, the, it's split jurisdiction. MDOT has trunk line jurisdiction for some distance from Woodward. And then it's a road commission. The rest of the service drive, the 10-mile is the road commission for Oakland County's jurisdiction. In my experience, MDOT is better than the road commission about maintaining things like that. You know, my suggestion was blow it into the street because one thing that the road commission does do is street sweep. So, you know, use their maintenance, you know, their maintenance processes to our advantage. Because that's, you know, it blows up with the snow in the winter when they plow. That's where it all comes from. So go back out there and let them sweep it up. So that would be my recommendation in the future.
Yeah.
Because they will do that. Because, you know, we, we're always very hesitant to take on maintenance responsibilities for roads that aren't ours because oftentimes then the other jurisdiction says, oh.
Right. It becomes yours.
Yeah. But yes, we understand it was in bad shape, and, you know, we'll keep an eye on it.
Cool. All right. That's all I have, Mayor.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other?
Sure. I wanted to congratulate the Pleasant Ridge Women's Club on a very successful brunch, spring brunch. It was a beautiful event, as it always is, and they, they broke their record from last year of funds raised that are raised for a very good cause. They're for, they raise money for, you know, one of their main events is for scholarships for children, for all the kids in our, that live in this school district. They can apply for scholarships to go, you know, that are just cash scholarships to use for whatever you need as you're going to college. So they also help with other projects and stuff. I know they've done some things for the city, like helping with podiums and different things like that, but they're, and we also gave money to an amazing group of a cappella singers. This, this young women's group from the high school was just beautiful. So congratulations to the Women's Club. It is a great organization, and I encourage all the, the women in Pleasant Ridge to, to join in and help, you know, lift it up and carry it on. So thank you.
I have one thing. I just want to remind everybody to buy their tickets, buy their tickets for the auction. It's a weekend from Saturday, 80's theme, and that will be supporting the, the main room and the ruck that we're going to be redoing that.
Yeah.
So that's, that's a huge contributor, so please come. It's fun, and you're supporting your community.
And it's not too late for blocks or different organizations to get a gift together and donate.
To donate a gift basket, yep. A lot of streets are having some serious competition with that.
Yes. Yes.
All right. My additions are just to reinforce the pool opening. You expect me to do that. And then also, we have our Memorial Day festivities, 9:00 AM on the 28th, Monday the 28th. So come and, and have cannon fodder and... It's a very nice, nice event. The park looks beautiful, as a matter of fact. And so it's a very nice event, and then run home, change, and get to the pool, so.
And just a quick one. On the home and garden tour, our road construction should not affect your ability to get to the various homes, so by all means, get out and enjoy the home and garden tour and see some other homes in places where you might not normally park because of... It should be fun.
Excellent. Any, any other items? All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
In favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.